Okay, hello everyone and welcome to session five of Youth Advocacy Training for Ocean and Climate Action. This is a special session. We usually only have our regular one through four sessions for the advocacy training program. And this is a little bit of a treat that we have today, talking about taking actions with ZAMS. I will repeat myself a couple of times, I think throughout this presentation, talking about what ZAMS are. As we have more people joining us, ZAMS stands for Zoos, Aquariums and Museums, Public Informal Education Institutions. We're going to reference that acronym many, many times during this program, so just stick with us. But as we are filtering in here, feel free to introduce yourselves in the chat. Go ahead. Let us know your name, your age, where you're from. And today's icebreaker for the session is what is your favorite place to learn new things outside of school? So think about any sort of public institution that is an informal education setting, where you can learn new things and go ahead and share that in the chat. We'll get started in just a minute. Okay, we've got Kellen from Connecticut loves learning from zoos, Kavia from Illinois also zoos. Zayamara, that's a beautiful name from Hawaii. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Favorite place to learn outside of school is cool reels, Instagram reels, I'm assuming. Definitely a good source. Awesome. Hope you guys keep sharing in the chat. It's going to be interesting to see what everyone says. My favorite place to learn is my local public library. There's always different programs and stuff going on. A lot of people saying their zoos are their favorite place and I love to hear that. I think that's super relevant for our conversation today. So if you were not able to attend the first four sessions and this is the first time you're attending advocacy training, please make sure to catch yourself up on YouTube. All of the recordings will be available up on the World Ocean Day YouTube channel, including this one most likely on Tuesday. So be sure to keep an eye out for that if you want to go back and re-listen or anything like that. And then for those of you who are just joining us for the first time as well, we'll have our panelist introduction. We'll go into the discussion, have a little bit of time for Q and A at the end. We'll talk about certificate of completion stuff for the program at the end and then another couple of announcements. So yeah, the Q and A, if you guys have questions at any point during the conversation, feel free to use the chat or the Q and A feature with Zoom and we'll do our best to get to all of the questions at the end. So now we're moving on. I'm going to introduce Tiffany Macarelli. She is our wonderful speaker for today. She has done a lot of wonderful education work and now is the manager of youth development at the New England Aquarium. She has a lot of awesome experience, so I'll pass it over to Tiffany so she can introduce herself.
Thanks Laura. Thank you for having me. I'm so excited to be here. I'm really excited to talk to all of you. As Laura said, I work at the New England Aquarium, which is in Boston. I lead our youth development program. So just real quick, what they entail. We have teen internship programs where teens between the ages of 14 and the summer after high school can work at the aquarium, either in the summer or throughout the school year and they're paid to work in one of our various departments. So some, some roles are visitor facing and some are animal care facing. So we have that. We also have a climate teens program, which is a climate change advocacy group that's focused on learning in the first half of the school year. And then the second half of the school year, it's really focused on creating some sort of activity that our climate teens can use to bring into the community to teach people about climate change advocacy and mitigation. And that is for 14 through 18 year olds. And then we also have a brand new youth advisory council that's made up of recent program alumni. So between the ages of 16 and 22, who've participated in our youth development programs previously. And now they're part of this leadership board, thinking about how we can make our programs better and how we can grow them in the future. And thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here.
Awesome Tiffany, thank you. And, and I'm really excited for you to share your experience during this conversation because we're going to be talking about how young people can go about working with their local ZAMS to enact the change that they want to see in their communities and beyond. So starting off this conversation is how powerful these institutions are as trusted community facilities. You know, we go to, obviously all of you guys like to go to your local institutions and learn. And they are really great resources for a lot of different things, but not just solely within the boundaries of their community. There's a lot of engagement and impact that these institutions can have outside of their local community. And that starts with engaging with the larger scale conservation campaigns such as World Ocean Day. So for Tiffany, this question, this first question is what role do ZAMS play exactly in such global initiatives like World Ocean Day and similar conservation campaigns?
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Um, yeah. So as you said, ZAMS are these trusted community organizations. So there are places that people are used to coming to. So when we're bringing conservation campaigns to these spots, to these communities, they're going to have a lot of reach, right? So we're trusted places where people have this reach. So I'll speak on World Ocean Day specifically because I work at an aquarium and it's very applicable. But for World Ocean Day, what the New England Aquarium does is we have a huge festival that's open to the community. The aquarium's free for the day. People can come explore the aquarium and there's a giant festival, kind of like in our backyard. And so our youth specifically will have a table at that event and they'll highlight their work as climate teens or as teen interns. They create some sort of activity, a tabletop activity that visitors can come and engage with and learn about some sort of issue that's important to them. So it's different every year. It's youth led. And then sometimes our youth will also, they influence who else is invited to this, to host a table or to talk about things. So they have input in deciding who should we invite, like the youth leaders at the Museum of Science in Boston and the youth leaders at the Franklin Park Zoo in Boston. So they're able to make connections between other community organizations and really talk to leaders at the aquarium and say, these are important people that should be at the table and part of this event. So I think the big role that ZAMS can play is really kind of uniting all these different organizations. And specifically when it's youth led, things are so much more powerful. I'll talk about another, another campaign, conservation campaign from a couple of years back, but it's really important and was really strongly youth led. So I just wanted to highlight it. Couple of years back, some of our teens involved in our program were really passionate about Fridays for Future and climate strikes that were happening on Fridays. So they came to some program staff and said, we are participating in these, but we want the aquarium to participate. So we want to participate as aquarium, as workers of the New England Aquarium, not just as ourselves. And they ended up just convincing us that this was important, that the New England Aquarium had to be behind this initiative. And so they got a seat at the table. They met with the CEO of the New England Aquarium. They had planning meetings where they talked about what would the involvement look like? How could the New England Aquarium support it and what kind of presence will we have there? So they got into all the logistics of what, how will we have lunch? Who's going to go there? Are we going to have permission slips to give to our schools so that they know why we're not showing up for school on Friday? So it was, it was very youth led and it was an amazing way for the New England Aquarium to put their, their power, right? And their knowledge and the reputation they had with the community behind these young people. Something that was important to them and important to the mission of the organization as a whole.
Yeah, a hundred percent. I think that's a fantastic example. And I think we're going to really dig into this conversation about how young people can actually take these steps. And it does depend on the institution. You know, sometimes they are privately owned. Sometimes these institutions are run by nonprofits. Sometimes they're owned by the city. And all of those different circumstances can kind of mean different things in terms of like, what you're actually able to do as far as like political involvement is concerned, but we'll get into that. So yeah, I think that's a fantastic example and I think leads us really well into this next section because young people throughout all of history have been at the forefront of, you know, the civil rights movement and, and all sorts of important changes that have been made throughout the world. And that type of change, as discussed, is, is really, there's a lot of high potential for big impact when you work within these institutions to be able to, you know, take that out into the world. So when young people are trying to do like what you just said, they, they got involved with Fridays for Future and they wanted to represent on behalf of the aquarium. There is sometimes a little bit of consideration that need to be made in terms of like what is actually possible here. So when young people go to approach their program leaders, what is a good way to go about doing that? What, how can they actually encourage an institution that might have some like stricter rules that they follow to be able to take action? And then what are some of the elements that actually, that young people can push forward? That will kind of make it be a little bit more appetizing, let's say, to those who are in the decision-making seats?
Yeah, for sure. That's a wonderful question. Um, I would say first off, I would start by approaching program leaders who you know and you have a relationship with. So maybe it's a supervisor or someone who coordinates the youth development program. So you're a part of, when you already have a relationship with someone and you know them and they know you, it's just easier to get started that way. So I'd say that's a great place to start. And then if you're really organized and explaining what you want to do and why it's beneficial, you're going to have more success. So I would say if you could outline, what is the initiative that you want to support? Like what is it? Get all the research around it. What's, what's it, why it's important? And then highlight exactly, not just why it's important for, you know, the world, but also why is it important for this institution that you're approaching? Like, how does it tie in with their mission or with what they're doing? What's, what's that important there? So that they're seeing that tie in. And then if you can get together data, like do a lot of research, maybe you can, I know in the past and situations here, youth have put out a survey, like just like on Google for people. And then they have all this data of quotes and stories and the amount of people that would support this. So they have something that they can bring to people. And then I would say another really important piece of that puzzle is highlighting the intended impact. So if we are part of this initiative, what kind of impact will that have on the community? And then it's also important to say, what kind of impact would it have on, on this organization? So what are some of like the net positives for you? Are there going to be a ton of people that are going to be so excited you're supporting this? That then they're going to come to your institution more often. Is it going to help with visitors? Think about, look at your, your institution's mission, right? What they do? And then see how you can tie this initiative into it and make it more appealing for your organization. And if you're going to hand them this, this very organized package, it's going to be harder for them to say no when you have all those pieces in there already.
Yeah, absolutely. Thinking through the, the questions they might be asking you ahead of time. This definitely pulls from all of the other sessions of this program, especially event planning and fundraising and campaign organizing. We talked a lot about in both of those two sessions, putting together, well, and, and social media and communications as well, putting together your why, your reason for doing what you're doing. That honestly, I feel like is the easiest step, especially when most of ZAMS do have like a written mission statement and purpose for the institution, as long as that aligns. That's usually a pretty good idea, but then there's also, you know, the process of going about doing that. It's taking all of those skills that we talked about over the last couple of weeks and putting them into action. And I also think that, you know, when they see what, like what you're saying is, is putting together the most well-rounded proposal that you can, when they see that they're putting in effort and they really are like doing the groundwork to try and make this happen. I feel like that in and of itself also kind of lends itself to them being open to the ideas too. Yeah.
For sure. Yeah, they're seeing all that work that's put into it and they know what they're going to get from this experience.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So definitely something to consider. You know, it's, it's tough when young people have a lot of other stuff going on and they want to work on these types of proposals. Cause like it is so much work, but the payoff is so worth it when you can actually reach these high level decision makers and, and create the seat at the table for yourself, which we'll talk about here. Because, you know, all of these initiatives that we're talking about, it's awesome that the examples that you used earlier was super youth led. But that's not possible without intergenerational collaboration, which is also something we talked about on the program last week. Because obviously the people who are running these organizations and institutions are older than the general age group that we're talking about now. And so there does have to be like a middle ground meeting place for that. It is a two-way street. So, um, I mean, obviously feel free to use the New England Aquarium as, as an example, but do you know of any other institutions, whether local to you or otherwise, that you know of that, you know, can lend itself to this question? So what ways do you see ZAMS listening to and integrating youth perspectives? Cause clearly New England Aquarium is doing a great job, but there's like a whole spectrum of this. So what are some other strategies that young people can use to secure that seat at the table that they're looking for?
For sure. Yeah. Um, for sure. Yeah. There's so many. When we were first creating our youth advisory council, we did so much research and just reaching out to other organizations and seeing how, how open they were to including youth voice and what they were doing. And there's organizations who are, who are light years ahead of what we're doing. And there's organizations who are still finding their way. So there is, there's like such a diversity in what's out there. I will say what we found a lot is that many organizations are interested in listening to youth voice. They're at least, they're at least interested in saying that they are. Sometimes the details of actually doing that are more complicated for them. And that's where they can get a little, a little slower to, to in the uptake. But institutions want to listen to youth. They recognize, I think that oftentimes youth voice is less about constraints and like why we can't do things and more about, but we can if we try this. So there's so much creativity in there. And I do think a lot of organizations appreciate that creativity. And I would say strategies you can use is to leverage that, right? So talk about how there's so much creativity and how acknowledge that there are constraints, right? So you can acknowledge, yeah, you know, this money might be an issue and staffing could be an issue for this. Acknowledge that you, you know, they exist and then think about, but how can we get around that, right? So they're seeing that you're thinking about all the different steps. And then they're going to be more likely to keep opening their ears as they should. I would say a big piece too in securing a seat at the decision-making table is finding your allies, your adult allies at these organizations. Maybe they're the people that always work with youth. Maybe there's someone else in a different area, but the people who are open to working with you, because they have and they see the value that you bring to the table. I think that's a great place always to start. And then when you're, if you're pushing for like the creation of an advisory board, I would say use examples, like do research, see advisory boards. Maybe it's a government related, maybe like your city or town has a youth advisory board, or maybe a different city or town does. And you can, you can pull some information about that, whether it's articles, or you can talk to people who are on those boards. You can talk to people, staff at the organizations that have been affected by having youth on their boards and get their perspective. And then you can use that when you're sharing that with whatever organization you're trying to approach to create a youth advisory board. I would say also like starting small and making a case for yourself can be really important. So specifically starting with, maybe you can't immediately get a seat at the board of an organization, right? That's really difficult. Or maybe you can't even get them to get behind creating a youth advisory board. Well, then maybe say, well, can we include youth voice in this one piece of our program? So like find a small, tiny little nugget of the program that might be easier for people who aren't as excited to include youth voice to digest. And they can say, okay, well, this is affecting youth. So yeah, youth should be at the table when they're thinking about maybe like what events we show up at. They can be a part of that. And then you do that and you make a case for yourself and you show how beneficial it was. And then they're going to be a little more open to you scaling that and kind of making it bigger and growing little by little. I would say don't get discouraged by small steps. It's easy to get discouraged by them. But if you just keep at it and keep going and at every turn, you're pulling in allies to help you and you're showing a case for why what you're doing is important. You're going to keep taking bigger and bigger steps until you can eventually get to the place where you want to be.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's really helpful advice as well because these are large institutions. There's often red tape that you have to go through and it does take time. And we do live in a world where young people who, you know, grew up on the internet, there's a certain level of instant gratification that we are accustomed to these days. And it can be disheartening at times for sure, but I think the thing to really consider is, is to your point that they really do want to listen to young people. And even though, you know, the creation of a youth advisory board, like I guess out of curiosity, how long did it take from proposing the idea of creating a youth advisory board to that actually happening? How, how long did that take at New England?
That's a great point. It was a multi-year process, like three to four years before we actually had people on the board from that first day of the idea of, oh, we might need this, you know, alumni aren't engaging as much. They're kind of feeling like they were a part of this community as they were teens. And now all of a sudden they feel like that whole community dissolved. So how do we re-engage them in the mission? So from like those first talks to this past December, when we've had our first people onboarded onto staff for the youth advisory council was just about four years. So it takes a long time, which can be discouraging. But I think if you keep remembering what you're doing right now, even if you aren't one of the youth who gets to see that impact, the youth who come after you are going to be handed something so much better than you were handed because of what you've done and the work that you've done to create that.
Absolutely. And that was exactly my point in asking that question too, because as a young person, you engage, you do the thing. As you're getting older, some of those opportunities and, and sense of community does start to dissolve a little bit. But the thing that to, to remember here is that when you're working to lay the foundation for a program like this, it's always going to be something that you can come back to, even if you've technically aged out of like the youth age group or whatever that is like the program is designed for, because the people who you worked with most likely are still going to be working, at least a couple of them at that instance, they're going to know you and they will be able to continuously intake your thoughts and feelings on things. If you want to stay engaged and they will also still be able to, you know, put into motion those ideas and stuff. And it's just this continuing cycle. So remembering to stay engaged even after it takes a little bit is, is always something that I would encourage for sure. So with ZAMS, there is also another organizational kind of structure that exists that we want to talk about today. So if you have heard of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the AZA, just as an intro for everybody who may not have heard, this is an organization that makes sure that the husbandry status and, and level of care for the animals at zoos and aquariums is higher than twice the legal requirement. It makes sure that the educational components of all of the programming is up to very, very high standards. There are species survival programs for breeding specific species to hopefully one day release them into the wild to bolster wild populations. There's so many different programs that the AZA runs in addition to making sure that member zoos and aquariums are up to certain standards that we can take advantage of as young people trying to enact change. So to just kind of give that overview, I know that's part of this first question here, but I kind of wanted to add just so that we're all on the same exact page. What are some of the ways that the AZA can, you know, bridge some of these gaps? And, and how young people can start to leverage some of these conservation programs for enhanced and bolstered engagement?
Yeah, for sure. There's so many ways. So one is just through AZA, there are so many other institutions, maybe in your same geographic area that are also part of that. So you can create these relationships, like networking opportunities with other youth at, at those organizations. And there's power in people, right? And the amount of people, the, the more people you have behind something, the more power you have behind that. So that's one part. And then also specifically thinking of like how that affects community organizations. There's so many initiatives through AZA, whether it's like ocean conservation or species specific. But something that's really accessible for communities is their citizen science initiatives. So if you think about the communities that you're a part of, aside from the zoo, aquarium or museum that you're a part of, think of all the other communities you belong to, right? So is that like school related? Maybe you have another job that's related to that. Maybe it's geographical community or a cultural community or a faith-based community. Think of all these communities that you're a part of. And then think about how you can bridge that gap from those communities to this zoo and aquarium initiative. Maybe citizen science is the way, right? So maybe you can, you identify one of those communities that's really important to you, that you think is, is primed for engaging with citizen science or with your zoo or aquarium or museum. And then I think the, the biggest part sometimes is going to those communities and, and asking them if this is helpful for them. So you can say, hey, I've got this citizen science project. Does this align with what you're doing? Maybe you were part of a boys and girls club, right? So you go to that, that club, that after-school program and you say, hey, there's this really cool citizen science initiative. Maybe it's around like documenting frogs, right? And so we're, we're documenting how many frogs and then that goes to a researcher and then we're part of their research. Do you think this could align with what, what some of your missions and some of what you're doing? And how could that impact you? And do you find value in this? And if they do, and if there's stuff there that, that you can kind of bridge the gap, that can be a good way to start, right? So talking those communities, building relationships, I think as young people, you're often the holder of so many relationships, right? Cause there's so many pieces of your life, whether it's school or all these different places. So just like connecting those different communities to the zoo, aquarium, museum where you work can be really impactful, right? Cause you're making the community larger. And you're kind of spreading this conservation initiative that's important to you, to the other parts of your community. And you have clout in those communities, right? Like you're a member of those communities. You're trusted, right? They see you as part of what they are doing. So if you can say, yeah, this, you, this is important to me. I'm important to you. And this other initiative is another community I'm a part of and that's important to me. And maybe we can, we can kind of bring them together and see what we can do together.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I love this conversation because when we talk about, you know, working with ZAMS, we're kind of framing this conversation in terms of like, if you're already like really ingrained in an institution as a climatene or a youth advisory council member, volunteer, an intern or whatever, working within these structures to make impact, that's kind of how we're talking about this. But the other part of this that you mentioned is going to your other communities. You are still a member of the zoo and aquarium and museum community, even if you've just like been there a couple of times and you've engaged with, you know, the interface and you've learned at that facility. And so there's the other way of looking at it is if you aren't a climatene or you're not on a youth advisory council member, you're not like officially, you don't have, you know, some jacket that says your name on it with the logo on it, you know, that's okay. You can still approach these organizations, these ZAM institutions and say, hey, I'm a member of this community. I've, you know, been involved with you guys before, but I still want to see these changes. And then, you know, that is another thing that people really like to see that I, I know that I've seen from, you know, ZAM staff saying, oh my God, this person is like so in love with the stuff that we're doing. Let's figure out a way to, you know, get them on board with what we're doing too. So yeah, there's a lot of different ways of, of looking at this for sure. And then I see Zayamara said, yes, because stakeholders are everyone who cares about an issue. Yes, absolutely. In the chat. Yeah, definitely. Before we move on to the Q and A, we have a lot of time for the Q and A. Are there any other tips Tiffany that you have for young people who, you know, may have never done event planning or, you know, coordinated a campaign or worked directly with an institution where, you know, they might be feeling a little overwhelmed, a little intimidated and they don't know exactly what channels to go through. What are your words of advice for that person?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah. I'd say, so like I said, start with connections that you already have, right? People you're comfortable talking to. And also I would say, think about some of your strengths, like what is important to you, right? So people that are part of a mission or an event or anything that's happening, they all play a different role, right? So not everyone, maybe you're not comfortable talking out in public, right? Or having speeches or things like that, or maybe you're not comfortable approaching someone in person. That's totally okay, right? So maybe you're better at writing. So you can send emails to someone to start a connection. So maybe you're better at writing. So you can send emails to someone to start a connection. Or maybe um, if you're planning an event, right? You have other people who are handling that stuff of, of calling up people and making connections. And maybe you're writing the flyers for it, or you're working on creating the website. Uh, maybe you're an artist. Can you create some sort of art that can spread a message that can be shared on social media to people, to, to make them aware of what you're doing? Um, or you're a photographer, like can you, can you photojournal what's happening? And then you have documentation of what you've done so that you can share it with people for the future to help them with their events or initiatives. So I'd say really think about what's important to you and what are you good at? What are you comfortable with, right? We always have so many areas to grow in and we have so many areas we're comfortable in. So think about that. Think about what you can lend to the event or to whatever's happening. Um, that's gonna be helpful for you cause you enjoy it, right? You're gonna stay connected cause it's something that's important. Um, and also something you're comfortable with. So you're, you're gonna keep coming back and doing it. Um, and that's gonna help you grow in areas that you're a little less comfortable in. So um, I would say just, just hold space for the fact that everyone is different and that's a wonderful thing, right? Cause we can all fill in different spaces that come together and make this whole big picture together.
Yeah, absolutely. That is like the one thing that you really should be keeping in the back of your head. Uh, we talked about this last week, uh, for event ca- or yeah, campaign organizing, where everybody that you meet, doesn't matter what side of the political aisle they're on, what their job is, what their life experience is, where they come from, who they are. Everybody that you meet knows something that you don't. And there is always gonna be a learning opportunity with whoever it is that you're having a conversation with. And I think as young people, it can be very intimidating to like see this big huge aquarium or zoo or museum and know that there's, you know, at least a couple staff members running this thing. And for you to be like, I have an idea, that takes a lot of courage. And I think that that is something that you should be very proud of as well. Um, and you know, being open to these learning experiences, you know, it might not go perfectly well the first time you try, but it's always worth, you know, reminding yourself that it did take courage to do that thing, that I did learn and then I can come back and, and try again next time. Um, I think that's also very important to, to keep in mind. Um, so yeah, so let's chat a little bit more with our audience here. If you guys do have any questions, feel free to share in the chat, use that Q and A feature. I am interested to hear from our audience as well. Um, if they themselves have ever tried to engage in a new program or try to make changes at their specific facility, uh, facility that you work with. Um, and if you've had any good examples that somebody might like to share in the Q and A or, or chat as well. Um, and as we're waiting for people to filter in and, and share their experiences, Tiffany, are there any other examples that you can think of, of more, you know, other institutions who are, you know, actively engaging with young people and, and really focusing on this from the ground up?
Yeah, for sure. Um, there are so many. Um, most of my examples are Boston-based, just cause that's where I'm at. Uh, but I know Save the Harbor, Save the Bay is an organization in Boston that's really focused on um, conserving Boston Harbor specifically. So it was one of the dirtiest harbors in the nation. Now it's so clean, anyone can use it recreationally for anything. It's a great success story. And it's Save the Harbor, Save the Bay's story. Um, and what's really wonderful about them is they, they had this mission that they set out to do, clean the harbor. They did it. So now what? Well, they keep sort of upping the game. Um, and so now they're really focused on involving youth in the mission and leading them through that. So um, they have these things where youth lead these trips out to the islands in Boston Harbor. And youth will explain to people what's going on in the ocean. Um, they'll let them, they'll teach people how to fish, right? So these are young people, like fourteen to eighteen who are doing this. So they're literally, these young people are bringing people out to the islands in Boston Harbor for people who live in the city. Um, and they're saying, come on out and check it out, explore it, go swimming, check out the ocean. They're building these connections into the outside world that might seem simple, but it's a huge thing, right? Cause they're giving people these experiences with the ocean. And when people have experiences with something, they're gonna love it. They're gonna wanna conserve it. They're gonna wanna help it. Um, and it's really a youth-led initiative, which is really impressive.
Yeah, that's spectacular. I love to hear that. I love uh, cleanup the bay success story. That makes me very happy. I, I know of a couple similar um, examples of that, like Heal the, uh, Heal the Bay here in Los Angeles. And then the Billion Oyster Project in New York, um, working to do community cleanups and stuff. Um, I know just because of reading the chat from the last couple of sessions that a couple of our audience members do, um, you know, have experience with doing, you know, community cleanups, beach cleanups and, and that sort of thing. But it's interesting to hear, um, if there are any of those, you know, local with your actual ZAM institution. We do have somebody here in the chat says, um, I don't have much experience creating a new organization of some sort myself. However, at the Waikiki Aquarium, we do emphasize the importance of our endemic species to the island. Yeah, that's awesome. Hawaii has one of the greatest percentages of endemic species because of how remote we are. Yep. We also push to let visitors know the importance of grazing species to our coral reefs and just the ecosystem as a whole. Yeah, I love that. There's, you know, so many niche experiences that you can have depending on where you are. And that's also uh, something to leverage within your institution as well.
Yeah, for sure. And you think about, you're a part of this community, you know what's happening to it. I think of some of our youth and they'll talk about different neighborhoods within the city and how different issues are affecting them. And they're really the experts on this because they're living it, whether it's sea level rise or um, not related to the ocean, right? And so there's like a, a bus depot in one area of the city and more people, more children in that area have asthma because of it. There are people who are living and impacted by this. Um, so there's so much value in that. Um, whether you're talking to a zoo, aquarium or museum, or just to the general public, people are gonna listen to you when you're talking about your experience and how it's impacted you. So there's, there's so much power in that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that, that actually does raise a good question as well. Is once you have, hopefully some of you guys will, will try to go and do this after completing this program is, is engage with these institutions. And once you do that, you obviously want members of the public to know what you're doing. You want, and, and you would assume that the aquarium would do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of promotion. But when we had that question about, you know, what are some of the other organizations within your communities that you can partner with and stuff? How can a young person go about like spreading the word? We get a lot of questions about like, where do I go and find this information? The other side of that is where do I share this information to?
Yeah, for sure. Definitely. Um, yeah. So I would say like, some of our young people involved in our program, sometimes they're just sharing information about how to get involved with the programs, right? So they're like the holders of relationships with people at their schools. And so they'll say, hey, there's this, this program going on. This is how you get involved with it. So that can be like a huge way. Um, I also wanna talk about like another way of sharing things is through social media. Um, and wanna share something that's like a little more of a struggle point for young people because that's part of the reality, right? At our institution. Um, and so youth in our programs are always like, we should have our own, well, years ago, they wanted to like have their own Instagram or they wanted to have their own Snapchat now. So there's all different things that they're like, we should have a teen-led thing. Um, but there is red tape at huge organizations sometimes. And so there's like a brand that some people hold very, very close to the organization and, and they're, they don't wanna let that go into the hands of youth. Um, so that was like something that was like an issue of contention sometimes and it was hard and it took a lot of talking. Um, but, but sometimes when some of that stuff comes to be, you can think about, well, how do we get around that? And so what some of our youth did was they said, well, what if we, we don't have our own accounts, right? But, but we had like a takeover day and some of the social media staff could be a part of what we're doing. And they can come and talk to us ahead of time. So we're learning like the brand-specific way of sharing information. And then we can be sharing that information. Um, so there's like ways to go around things sometimes when there is some of that hesitation from leaders at your organizations. Um, be creative. That's like the number one thing I'd say is be creative. There are ways around that. Um, sometimes it takes a long time to get there, but, but keep trying.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the red tape is real. It definitely is real. And um, before I worked for the Ocean Project for, for World Ocean Day, I was a marine science educator at my local aquarium. And I am very familiar with the idea that, you know, the youth programs are sometimes not exactly on-brand um, in the way that we, you know, would hope that they would allow us to be. But um, you know, yeah, exactly to your point, just being creative is, is really the best way around that. Um, we also have Maddie here in the chat that says, I am part of the education team at the Fort Wayne Zoo and get to go to elementary schools to teach about wildlife and conservation. And it's so encouraging to see the K through five students go from not liking animals or not caring about nature to taking part in conservation and being so excited to learn and share their new knowledge with their families. Yes. And actually I think that, that does kind of lend itself to my last question is sharing with their families is a huge part of that too. Um, you know, that's why these institutions are so successful at what they do is because when you teach young people about what's going on in the world, they are the best people to be teaching their parents about it as well.
Exactly, for sure. Yeah, I think back to even when I was uh, young, like a teenager. And um, my parents would, when I bring something up at first, I'd be like, I say it was something new and radical and they weren't used to, they'd be like, ah, that's, what are you talking about? But then the longer you talk about it, right? You're, you're living with these people, you're living with your families. Eventually they're like, wait, what is that? What, why is that? And then they have like a little more curiosity, right? And you keep talking about things. Um, so even, even this is awesome, um, what you just shared in the, in the chat, um, Maddie. But it's so cool, even something small that seems small is not small, right? So you're sharing your knowledge with uh, an early elementary aged child. And then they're getting excited about something, about some particular other animal or some piece of nature. And then they're gonna bring it back to their families, right? And they're gonna talk about it. Um, and then when someone you love, loves something, right? You're, you're so much quicker to help protect it or help conserve it, right? Because you see the impact it's having on someone you love. Um, and maybe you'll grow to be one of the people who loves that as well. So there's a lot of power in those relationships that we hold.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that was one of my favorite parts of being a marine science educator at the aquarium was being able to watch the faces of like little kids when they see like a new kind of fisherman by or a shark or a stingray or whatever it was. And then like get really excited and then turn around and run straight over to their parents to tell them about it. It's like the best thing ever. Um, and that is kind of the goal here, right? When we, you know, are working with these institutions, it's, you know, important to remember that the community is, is of all ages. Obviously, we talked about the intergenera- intergenerational collaboration that's necessary here. And obviously anybody of any age can come to any ZAM and enjoy themselves. But I think that focusing in on young people is not only like kind of just the right thing to do, it is actually strategic because you're actually getting them to do some of that education work on their own. Um, which I think is really cool to see. So yeah, appreciate that sentiment, Maddie. Yeah, and especially when they do uh, begin asking questions for sure. And I would suggest, you know, I, everybody in this audience, you know, has a different um, connection point with their local facility. Like I said, you might be an intern, you might be a volunteer, what have you. But I would encourage the next time you have this experience of, of, you know, like a little kid coming up to you and, and they start really being like obviously engaged and excited to be like, well, have you been to our aquarium event doing such and such a thing? Like, have you thought about what it means to be involved and like help share this information as a young person? That's also something that I would, I would definitely encourage you all to, to think about doing next time.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah. And just reminding people, just like that, how can you help? And sometimes, especially young kids, first answer would be like, what? Me? How, how can I help? But it's so, it's so empowering to be able to explain, well, well, you can think about the things you can do. And just like, you almost see like a light bulb turning on in their head like, oh, I can do this. This is something in my power. Um, and that's, that's so rewarding.
Yeah, and I, I think we're really lucky in, in our position, having worked with these institutions directly as staff, that, you know, for me personally, like the, the locals, zoos and aquariums that I grew up going to, I lived in a bunch of, I moved around a lot when I was a kid and I went to a bunch of different types of institutions. And that was very, very formative for me. And I think it is a very nice full circle moment. And I'm sure Tiffany, you also have some sort of formative memory going to some sort of institution when you're younger. And I'm sure everybody watching right now also has that. And I think that that is really key to remember in, in engaging with these folks as well. Because again, there is red tape, there is, you know, time spent waiting and, and having a lot of the same conversation over and over and over again. That does happen. But I think holding on to those formative memories and, and remembering that you're trying to have that happen for as many people as possible throughout this process is, is really something to hold on to as well.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I, I talk often about this moment, but I remember being very young child, maybe four or five at the New England Aquarium. It's a young kid at the top of the giant ocean tank. And there's like this giant turtle in the giant ocean tank. Her name's Myrtle. She's been there since the aquarium opened. And I remember standing up there and I couldn't see like over this, the cement um, walls. But um, I remember hearing her at the surface just taking a breath and it was just like this huge deep breath. And I remember just thinking like, oh, she's alive. She's breathing. Like it was just this, this moment of transformation of no, this isn't an animal that I'm just looking at. This is a living being the way I am. I wasn't thinking of it in those terms, cause I was like four or five, but it was just so impactful. So I try and think of that often um, when I'm talking to people at the aquarium or in these things and just think about how sometimes those small moments of um, realizing connection between living things can be so formative to someone's career path. It was for mine, right? To, or even if they don't go into a career in conservation, um, maybe it's something they hold close to their, to their heart. And they, they vote with the environment in mind regardless of what their career is, or they spread the word about what's going on. Um, so those formative moments where people can have that one-on-one contact um, with something at your zoo, aquarium or museum um, are really important.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think actually I, I would, I would share some advice with this moment for you as well. For, for you, like all of you individually who have this moment, is that is a really good story to bring up when you are approaching the, the staff that you're looking to work with. Um, other community organizations, um, people outside of the institution. When you're, when you're trying to get them open to the idea of creating a youth advisory council, why is that important? Okay, well, young people have all of these experiences, obviously. They want to put their passion into action. There's a lot of untapped potential here. This is why. And so having that story to be able to tell in your back pocket is hugely helpful, having those conversations. Really great point. Yeah, so definitely if you guys have any questions, we've got plenty of time left. Keep the, the comments and questions coming in the chat and definitely feel free to use the Q and A feature. I did see somebody who had their hand raised. I don't really know if Zoom will allow us to let you guys come on mic here. But um, if you did have your hand raised, feel free to, to shoot your um, question in the chat or Q and A. Um, but yeah, I, Tiffany, do you have any other, you know, pieces of advice for young people about anything that we've talked about so far today?
Um, yeah, that's a great question. Um, I think I'm trying to think about like, I guess depending on your level of involvement with your zoo, aquarium or museum might be different. Um, but I would say, um, even if your involvement is small, like it's still impactful, make sure you realize how impactful your connection is. Um, and try to grow it if that's something you're interested in, right? So maybe, maybe you volunteer at like special events at an organization like once a year. And that's as often as you see them. Well, maybe see, can you, can you interact more often? Sometimes you're not able to depending on distance or other things going on in your life. But see if you can grow that. Um, I would say like, the big thing is when you're developing stronger relationships with people who holds the decision-making ability at these organizations, um, and maybe when they see you showing up and see the work you're doing, um, that's gonna be so impactful and really helpful for you to um, gain more opportunities for your voice to be heard, right? So um, that's gonna just benefit you.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. And yeah, I think all of you who are on with us today already have a certain level of understanding of, you know, how zoos and aquariums, museums work internally. Um, if you registered for this session, you already have some sort of connection point with one of these institutions. And that is very much the first step is, is, you know, finding, asking the right questions and, and finding these opportunities like this session to learn more and be curious and, and, and all of that as well. Um, I wanted to kind of go back to, to, to one of these questions here. I have the chat and the participants in the way here. Hold on one second. Um, with this question right here, pushing for things like the creation of advisory boards or similar direct representation within, on institutional boards within ZAMs, how difficult is that to do? What, what does? How difficult is that to do? What what does that actually look like? Because you said. It takes, it took, you know, three to four years for the New England Aquarium. Obviously, there was a lot of different puzzle pieces that had to fall into place. For that to actually happen. So what what is the like lift here that we're talking about?
Yeah, um, I think it's it's definitely different for every organization. It depends on where you're at, um, and what kind of barriers are in your way. Um, but with us, um, it started with just like socializing the idea with all different departments. And talking about, we're, we're gonna have a youth advisory council. Um, and this is why, like we use data from our surveys, talking about why it was needed. Um, we showed examples of other youth advisory councils in in government organizations and in other nonprofits. Um, and showed like how they were beneficial. We also showed people's lessons learned from people at other organizations. Who had youth advisory councils, who maybe um, youth advisory council members would put all this work into a proposal and then. Nobody would listen to it, right? Or it didn't go anywhere. So we had lots of examples of lessons learned. Um, because a lot of people were really gracious and sharing about their experiences. Um, so I think that that's a big part of it. Um, we learned so much that like managing expectations was important. For everyone, right? So for the aquarium, managing their expectations around. Um, youth are gonna sometimes suggest something that they you don't like and that you're maybe not in supported, support of. But it's important that your ears are open and you're listening, and you're listening to why they're saying that. Um, and also on the other side, managing expectations of our youth, um, there's a lot that our youth wanna accomplish. And I do too, but sometimes we can't do that as quickly as we'd like. Or sometimes we have to spend a little more time socializing the idea with people. Um, maybe building relationships with like a different department that we don't talk to as often. Because once you have a relationship with someone, it's a lot easier to convince them of why something is important, right? Because even if maybe there's a part of their brain where they're like, this isn't important, they know you and they know what you're saying is important. So they're gonna listen to you at least. And then that starts like changing minds or at least opening minds. Um. So I would say there's a lot of different steps and it really depends on what you're up against. Everywhere is different. Um, but yeah, it can be, it can be a long journey. And um, having support of like program leaders and of each other. Like if you can get, doing this by yourself would be exhausting, right? So are there other young people that can help you, that you can join forces with? And there's a bunch of you. And sometimes you might have a meeting with um, some leaders at your organization and they're not supportive of what you'd like them to be supportive of. And then you can lean back on those other young people outside of work, away from the zoo aquarium or museum and just vent, right? And just say, I'm so frustrated, this is why. And that way you're you're kind of airing those feelings with trusted people. Um, and then you're ready in your next meeting to go right back up to bat and try it again. Because you've had that support and you've shared what you needed to share. And then you're coming at it from a new angle, maybe, because you've had different perspectives. So like having support, whether it's from fellow young people or program leaders, anyone that you can get support from, build your community. So they've got your back when things don't go the way that you want them to, so that you're ready to keep trying and keep pushing.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a very inspiring uh, piece of advice there. Tiffany, thank you for that. And I think. You know, there's, like you said, every place is different. And I I do want to acknowledge Daniel here in the chat. Um, says that he is part of a network of young people committed to protecting water from the east of Democratic Republic of the Congo. Which is currently an area of unrest. It's not quite the safest place in the world right now. Um, and they are involved in collecting plastic waste on the shores of lakes and cleaning beaches. Um, there is some issues with freedom of expression, freedom of speech for sure. And he is concerned about not being heard. Um, and their complaints are just being filed away. But there's still issues happening. There's still plastic being produced. Um, first of all, Daniel, thank you very much for sharing. That's, it's very important work that you're doing. And I'm sure that the. Issues that you are facing are, you know, something that is quite discouraging at times. But I think to your point, Tiffany, finding your community that you can. Talk about these issues with, not just the issues, but your feelings on the issues as well. And why it's important to you, why you're frustrated, why you think that this still needs to be going on. Is one way to keep that momentum going. Um, and I, for Daniel, I mean, you know. I I don't know exactly the state of zoos, aquariums and museums in the Republic of Congo specifically. Um, I I don't know, you know, how many of those types of institutions there are, but it might be worth looking into. Because as a young person with a voice, every young person has a voice no matter where you live. You can work with these institutions to bring your message to a larger audience of people. Um, it's obviously gonna be more difficult in certain places, given certain circumstances. But there are still ways to amplify messages. Um, and I I would hope that, you know, even if it's not specifically. A zoo, aquarium or museum, there might be other public institutions that do some sort of informal education with a broad. Audience, excuse me, um, that you could work with to to share your message with.
Yeah, for sure. I would echo all of that. Um, and then just say, if there's a, as, as long as there's a safe way for you to engage with people. And explain this to them, uh, maybe like your, your complaints are are getting filed away, right? In archives and people in power aren't listening. Well, there are other people that you can reach out to. Um, and you can grow your community of people who understand why this is such an important message. And why this is affecting them, all this plastic pollution. Um, so who who can you get on your side, right? And get you to, get to understand what you're saying. And as that group grows and grows and grows, can you have a larger impact then at that point? Um, I also wanna highlight how important it is to fill up your own well, always, no matter what you do. But specifically when you're doing work that that's hard and challenging and conservation work, and when you feel like you're getting doors shut in your face all the time. Um, remember you're a human and your needs and your mental health is important too. So find the things that you can do that maybe have nothing to do with the conservation efforts that you're a part of. Um, that that make you feel whole again, right? And that uplift you. Because when you're in a place where you're feeling happy and you're feeling complete. And you're feeling like you're replenishing everything that you're giving out to the world, you're replenishing it for yourself again, you're gonna be able to make a bigger difference. So just remember to take care of yourself and your own needs as well. That's a huge part.
Yes, absolutely. One hundred percent. You cannot pour from an empty cup. Um, that is extremely important to remember. And I also wanna shout out, um, for this specific example, the Republic of the Congo. We have a a current member of the World Ocean Day Youth Advisory Council. Um, he's from Sudan. He's representing Sudan on the on the council and and similarly is a a place of unrest right now. Um, he was able to leave and and I think is in, uh, he's in Egypt. I think he's there for school or or work. Um, and he has been able to, you know, there's a certain level of, you know, not everybody can can physically remove themselves from the situation. But he is um, in Egypt and still working on different ways of creating change back home. In his, his origin community. And um, you know, I think that that is also something that is is worth thinking about. Is looking at other examples of what other people are doing around the world. And this, this applies to this specific example. And, you know, any other person who is struggling in any other part of the world. There are always going to be a community of people wanting to create change. You just have to figure out how to find them. And why we're talking about today um, is so important is because these specific institutions. Are one of many avenues that you can take to go ahead and and create that change. So. Um, yeah, if you are interested in learning more about Hamad and his work, you can go to the World Ocean Day website and um, check out his profile on there. Um, but yeah, we are at the top of the hour. So last, last call for any questions or comments from the audience. Um, we'll get to those in a second. I do just want to talk about the certificate of completion for the program. So um, we will be sending out the link for the certificate of completion. Next week sometime. I I don't have a specific day. It kind of depends on what my personal workload is for the week. I will do my very best to get it out to you as soon as possible. Um, and then you will have until the end of the month to complete that for the certificate. Um, it will also take us a little bit of time to actually complete all of their certificates once the survey is submitted. So. Even if you submit the certificate on time, it will probably still be a few days after the thirty first of March before you actually receive. The certificate. It does take some time on our end to put all of that together. So please be patient. But if you do have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email. And then, of course, thank you all so much for joining us for advocacy training for the last five weeks. It's crazy how fast this time has gone. Um, I love being able to do this program and it is a little bit bittersweet for me as I. Uh, am moving professionally on from the Ocean Project. This is my first sort of public announcement about this for me personally. Um, so I will not be doing a ton more work on advocacy training in the future. So this is most likely my last session doing this program, which is really, really so emotional for me. Um, so it's really cool to be with you for this session, Tiffany, and and really wonderful to have you here. And of course, all of the sessions for all of our programs are always gonna be up on the World Ocean Day YouTube channel. So if you ever have any questions about stuff that we've covered, feel free to go back, re-watch and and take some notes while you're at it. Um, and then of course, we want you guys to continue to keep this action going. Um, feel free to do your best and and put everything that you've learned throughout this program into action. World Ocean Day is a great time to do that. You have plenty of time, June eighth, you know, you've got time to set something up if you want. Um, and Earth Day is also a possibility, but you have a shorter timeline to do that. So I would suggest World Ocean Day, and I might be a little biased in saying that. Um, but of course, we have tons of resources for you on our website as well. Check out our event planning toolkit. There's a ton of free downloadable posters. That we have in a bunch of different languages. So if you speak a language that you do not see represented on there that you want to have. Um, feel free to email us and we, and if you have a direct translation, we will add that to a poster so you can download it and people in your community can have it. So. Um, yeah. We just wanna make sure that as many of you are taking advantage of these resources as possible and letting us know feedback as we go. Um, and yeah, that's part of the feedback survey. So again, keep an eye out for that. And uh, yeah, Tiffany, thank you so much for joining us for this session. It was awesome. And uh, yeah, have a great weekend.
Thank you so much for having me. It was wonderful being here. Thank you, everyone who's here. Thank you for all the work you do. Um, and thank you, Laura. Your, these sessions are amazing. They're such a huge part of our work at the aquarium. And I just want you, I hope you know what a huge impact you've had on so many people. Um, thank you for all the incredible work that you've done.
Thank you so much, Tiffany. Yeah, thank you guys for watching, for supporting World Ocean Day and and be sure to. Support your local zoo, aquarium and museum as as much as you can. I know that you all do and will continue to do so, but I'm still gonna say it anyway. Um, yeah, thank you, guys. Have a great rest of your weekend and we'll see you online soon. Bye, everyone.